You're getting prepared to be stressed.
We've got a meeting to order. This is a special call meeting of the town board to discuss one of the items that was discussed at some length during our annual retreat this past January, and that is the, what's the town going to do with the Whitmire property, which the town has owned since 2004, I believe Joe was. And the only person on this board who was around and is privy to all the conversations about that is Mr. Collins. So I think it'd be probably good for those who are not familiar with the issue, if Joe would take a few minutes and kind of give us the history and the background of that. And then, you don't need a dissertation, but just give us the high points of where it was, how the town got it, and what the plans were, and how it's evolved to what it is right now. That gives us a good background as we start discussing what the board's going to do with the future of the property.
Yeah, I became mayor in '03. Bob Scott started on the board at the same time. We didn't have a real good place to work out of, our earlier town hall. I personally was interested in the old Lowe's building, the way it laid out for our purposes. And we were down there, Jim Williams' son and Verlin Swafford, I mean, Verlin Curtis and I were down there, and we looked around, and then I could see Verlin and then Jim out in the parking lot looking up the hill. And they were looking at the Whitmire property. And they were thinking, that's what we need to do. And for all purposes of the property, it was designed, the thought was, it would be a combination of the town hall, the police department, and the public works. We went as far, we purchased the property. Joe Wright owned it. He had bought it from the Whitmires. It's been, always been called the Whitmire property because traditionally E.J. Whitmires raised his family and all of that there. A lot of that land is Whitmire subdivision. But it would have absolutely fit, perfect, for the use for which it was intended. Along about that time, for, I don't know what you call it, there were two or three different folks coming through town and giving seminars and giving talks to groups. And their main thing was, leave, make sure your town hall is downtown. Do not abandon your downtown. And it just, it kind of woke us up, woke some of us up, I can tell you. It was not at all a majority decision. And so we looked and we had this building. It was being used, the basement of it was being used for the police department, but it was not a good place for the police department. It had been the museum, the Tartan Museum, but at some point in time, there was friction between the town government and the Tartan Museum. And the museum got pulled out of this building and put across the street. So here we're looking downtown, and we have this building. We get phone calls from men, women in town in business saying, we're mighty glad the town bought the Whitmire property, but don't use it for public works and stuff like that. It's too valuable of a piece of land to be used for that type of purpose. So we had the land, but we also had this building. And then it became the decision, which I think was proper, that we would renovate here and go with our town hall here in downtown. And that left us with the Whitmire property. And it became, you all, they don't remember Slate Gate. Slate Gate was, oh, let me tell you, I about went down. It was a situation, it was a lot of bad feelings among a lot of people that we did not put what we were talking about putting up there. I mean, it's just one of those things. In the end, I'm glad that we, or where we're at. But we've owned the property. And we've always felt like, well, hell, we can't go wrong. It's land in the middle of town, good-looking land, and we can always, you know, get our money back. And over the years, there's been no situations really developed, which has allowed us to consider to do with it. So we've kind of inventoried it. But I think the board is not really sure that we want to continue in perpetuity just to have it as inventory property. Obviously, we're using it for certain things now. But it was acquired for that purpose. I think history will be good to us that we didn't use it for that purpose. But now we have that piece of property at our disposal, and we're hoping to figure out a good use for it.
When the town bought the property, did they pay for it upfront, or did they have to finance it?
We, I don't even know the numbers. But our former mayor, Mr. Henson, who was very much in charge back then, we didn't have a manager. We just had an administrator. We had money in the bank. The town had money in the bank. The town just cut a check for it out of, you know, out of our general fund balance. So no, it was not financed at all. It was just, just stroked a check and never, didn't move the needle much.
From what I read about the background of it, and I wasn't involved in it, but the town got the property. It's just under 13 acres for somewhere around $1.5 million, roughly speaking. But I think at the time, the value was probably more than that.
Well, we certainly thought it was going, it was at a time when prices were high, and you know, but we certainly felt like if, at any purpose, it was a good investment. And I'm not ever saying it hasn't been a good investment. But it certainly was purchased with one idea, and that got shifted through the sands.
That goes back to 2004. It's been quite a few years now. One of the things that the town did at some point in time, I don't think I was on the board then, is they hired a firm to do a study. And I've looked at the study. You've got a copy of it there. And it may have some good points in there, but I didn't really get a real strong sense of which way it was pushing, one way or the other. And you might, you might want to tell them a little bit about the study. And we can go into that in a little bit of detail before y'all discuss the future of it, if you want to. So people will kind of have an idea of what's going on.
You can make good arguments. You can make good arguments about three, two or three different ways of using that property. We kicked the can down and paid for a study, and they, they made those arguments. But in the, in the very end, whoever's going to decide, in this case, it might be this seven people, it's just what we feel like. And certainly, from '04 to '22, there's been plenty of time to look at it, drive by it, and all. So I don't put a lot of stock in the study. We got it, and we got it paid for. But we certainly owe it no allegiance to follow any.
I think you're exactly right. So I think the study basically says, you can do whatever you think you need to do with it. But here are some good points, if you do this, or this, or this, or this. And so it basically kind of laid out some information that some of the members already had, probably some of that information anyway. But it's, it basically says, well, what do you want to do with it? And like Joe says, it's up to the town board to decide. It's a 12.7 acre tract of property that belongs to the town that's paid for. The only thing we have up there now is we, the board allowed use of it for a disc golf course, which, and the reasoning behind that was if it ever, somebody ever came in and had a higher, more important use of that property, that this golf course could be, you know, taken up very easily. And then the last thing that happened was with the, with the commitment that the town made to try to assist in helping with the skate park, the decision was made by the board at that time, since the town owned two pieces of property. One of them was the J.C. Park. And for whatever reason, that didn't seem to be a good fit. And so the other piece of property was in the corner of the Whitmire property. And so the board at that time decided, let's go for that corner up there. And so that's where we are right now. Of course, we're still waiting to get that skate park up and going. And there's been a lot of turns and twists in that story since it started. But I think the town board has been committed to try to work something out on that. But that's kind of briefly an overview of the property. Everybody knows where it's at. The town, it had, it had a nice house on it at one time, built in the 1940s, I'd say. It was a big house, probably around 4,000 square feet where Mr. Whitmire and them lived. And then it fell to disrepair, and it actually got so bad that it started being a habitat for undesirables, I'd say. And so it got, it got in so bad a shape that we, one time, the board talked about, well, maybe we can convert that to something that's beneficial. And I think Mr. Guffever brought that up, and would say, let's go look at it and see. And after further review, I think the board came to the conclusion that the best thing you can do is take that thing down, because it's just too much of a liability for the town to have.
The house was taken down years ago. That was, that was just a little barn I was talking about.
Oh, it was a barn. It was a barn that was on there. The house was taken down years ago.
The house had a basement that was a death trap in a fire scenario.
There was never any idea going in that we would use the house for a police department. As it became clear among the board that there was a fracture as to whether we were going to use the Whitmire property or not, then the idea came up, well, it would be mighty economical. And so they'd send a builder through and, you know, do this and talk, oh yeah, we can renovate this. And so then that was whenever they pitched the idea, some of them, to use it for a police department. It was a bad idea, and it never got legs. But that, it, going in, it was going to level everything and build something. The builder said, the architect said, they wouldn't have to move a spoonful of dirt. The way everything laid out, I mean, being, they said, the slopes and everything was perfect for the two, for how, how they designed it. But it was just not downtown.
At one time, probably about 2009, the Economic Development Director and the county EDC thought of it as a potential site for industry or jobs and so forth. And I think it was marketed somewhat back there. But I don't think we had any serious, or there were any serious offers to purchase the property for industry or manufacturing. And so I don't know if it's still on their inventory list or not. But nobody's been beating down the door for us to build another manufacturing plant up there. But it was on the EDC's radar for a while, I think. So. But that's kind of where we are, is in a nutshell. And so the question is, the town has a really nice piece of property. It's got everything you need, water, sewer, natural gas, close to town, good access, fairly good access, probably could be improved some. So what can you, and one of the questions I think that came up when we discussed this back during the retreat was, what do we want to do with it? Do you want to try to sell it? Maybe you could sell it, maybe not. You'll tell them if anybody wanted to buy it, how much they'd give for it and so forth. So that's an unknown. And I think the discussion kind of ended up, well, if the town wants to use it, let's figure out what's a good public purpose for it, since we don't need it for a police department, or a public works department, or a town hall now. What's a good public purpose for this property for the people of this town who put the money up to buy it in the first place? So I think what the board's been wrestling with is, what can we do with this asset to make it beneficial to the most people in our jurisdiction? And so that's what they're going to be discussing tonight and come up with some ideas. Because we need to be able to give our manager and her team a focus on where to direct their energy and their resources to try to, to see if the idea that the board wants to use for this, use of this property for, that they have some direction in which to go. I think the manager would echo that. So I guess we'll just kind of throw it open now and, and get board members' opinions or ideas, or whatever they'd like to contribute as we get into discussing the future of the Whitmire property.
Mr. Mayor, we've got some graphics here, if you need to see them, of the actual property that's there, as well as Justin has been able to do us some of the future land use. And he also has the comp plan online, if you need any information out of that. So there's some things for you to consider as you're.
In relation to things that someone could point out where the proposed skate park is on there, I think that'd be helpful for people who are not intimately familiar with that piece of property.
Justin, if you'll come up and be our fan of life.
Oh, my God.
So the skate park, so you've got the gravel parking lot here that is used for
Tricor.
Tricor Lander.
Yeah, Lander.
They use it. So the skate park currently is pretty much this little, this corner from about halfway down, the gravel parking lot back towards this property line you see in blue. So it's pretty much a little rectangle right here is the.
That parking lot, is that still part of the town's property, or has that been sold to the industry that uses it for parking? Do you know?
No, it is, it is the town's.
Still, still under the town's ownership?
It's been kind of a gentleman's agreement, I believe, to let, you know, use that for parking over the years. Yeah, it's outlined in blue. Everything that's light blue is the property line. And this, of course, has got sewer lines and water lines. And then the shaded blue is the flood plain. So there is some flood plain down at the very bottom end here around this branch on the bottom of the property.
The current zoning for that piece of property is either residential or commercial or both?
It's all commercial. It's all C.
It's all commercial?
Justin, that top corner where they do storage for the area is that. They own it as well? This big, yeah. It's, no, they own it as well. It's their property. Which they've cleared it out now. It's just a cleared parking lot now. I don't think there's any. At one point, they had it just full of crates.
Yeah. It's the deed that they cannot use it for what they had it for. And the neighbors complained, I think, and that's why they had it done.
They had it for parking.
So those apartments that are right there, that, that's outside the Whitmire property?
Yeah, there's two pieces here that are.
That property was sold.
Yeah. Bob Sanders and them built those apartments in the, Joe Boy building.
Okay.
And they came to the board. And whenever the board bought the Whitmire property, they talked the board into giving them an easement 30 feet or something, so that we wouldn't be right up on them. There is some easement.
Buffer zone?
Yes. There's some buffer zone in place.
And this, this map shows where the house used to be right here. It's gone now. There was a, we had another aerial, an older aerial that showed it. But it's, this is a 2019 aerial.
When did it become C2?
Um, I'm not sure. It's not, if it was before I was serious, it's not a good thing to go with the other one. I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, you have anything that you want to add to that before the board?
I'm not sure. I didn't know if you wanted to consider, um, future land use.
Yeah, I just brought it as well, just to show, I didn't bring our current zoning map. I just brought the future land use to show. I don't get it. If they recommended all of it, pretty much all of the property to be traditional, is what it was recommended. You can see the lander piece is office and employment, is what they call it.
So all the yellow is residential?
Uh, yes. Low density, low to medium density residential is the yellow. The dark red is commercial, which this is. This is towards like the old Lowe's property. And then across here, the hashed yellow is urban mixed use, is how they called it.
But most of, of the Whitmire is?
Yeah, it's all the.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
I know y'all have had a chance probably to look at the, at the report. And one of the things that they always ask you when you run for the town board, or the mayor's office, what are you going to do with the Whitmire property? Did they ever ask you that when y'all were running for the town board?
No.
And you might, you may have had an answer then, but after you found out a little bit more about it, you may have a different perspective on that.
No, that's how, that's how I got here, was six years ago, Hogar Tate, Philip Ashleman, and Jimbo and I were looking for a place to put a bicycle pump track. And we approached the town about it. And Mayor Scott invited us to come talk. And we did a whole report, a layout of turning the Whitmire property into recreation. And Jimbo presented it. The town, I think, was at least receptive enough to, that's what motivated the town to spend $14,000 on a study to see what it could best be used at. I mean, you guys are disregarding the study. That's your right. But that's how I got here. I ran for office. That was one of my main platforms, was to, to try to help the youth in this area by providing in-town, out-the-door recreational opportunities. We can continue to focus on retirees and tourists if you want to, but it's at the expense of our youth. Until we invest in young people in this community, you will not see the results that you want. You will not see the businesses coming to town that you want. You will not see the drug problem cease to exist as we want them to cease to exist. You cannot ignore the most important demographic in our community continually. That being a part, that being a part will do more for this town than any other use that can be on that site.
Mr. Lewis, you've been on the board now for about three years, and you've seen and heard a lot of proposals. And I'm sure they probably quiz you from time to time, what do you think the town should do with that piece of property? Do you have any, any words of wisdom for us tonight?
I've thought about it since I first sat down on this chair three years ago. I don't think I know any more now than I did then, to be honest with you.
I know how you feel.
There's merit to what David says. And matter of fact, I was the one that made the big push to get the disc golf course put up there. But whatever we decide to do, I want this board to be unanimous in that decision. I don't, I think, I don't want any consensusism. I'm open to, I'm open to listen to anything at this point. I think there's a merit to, you know, there's a merit to other things. But at the end of the day, whatever we do, I think this board needs to be unified in more how we move forward.
One of the suggestions that came up sometime during the year, or maybe back several years ago, was what's the possibility of building a, a community center there? Some kind of a community center that would house different agencies and offer programs for a wide variety of people, and even, even a venue place for programs and so forth. And I think we talked about that, and Joe probably knows more about that than anybody. But looking at the site, there were a few problems with that as far as parking and space and so forth. Do you recall any conversations about that, Joe?
I just don't think that there was ever any serious conversation, not to the point where they put a pencil to it to see what it actually might cost to do something like that. No, it was never more than just a concept.
Okay. We'll throw it open for any observations, comments. Mr. Kimbiss, you've been around for a while. This is your second tour of duty here. Y'all probably talked about this your first term somewhat, over the years. And everybody comments or observations about the Whitmire property you'd like to share with us?
Yeah. So yeah, I was, I was on the board when we did the study. I, Dave kind of beat me to it. But I mean, I kind of agreed then. I thought that was a good use for it prior to the study would be a park, or at least some piece of it cut out for that. Since then, that study came back, said to land vacant, which I still think was a good idea. Property values have increased from the point that we had that study to today, probably, even though I don't know if we got it reappraised, did we, at that point? Because that was recommended in the study, we got it reappraised. But I don't think that we ever did that.
Current tax value on it has increased from 1.5 million to 1.973.
Okay. But I still think, you know, passive recreation is still a really good option. I think, like Dave said, I mean, I don't have to be somewhat responsible. I don't have to make sure we have money for the projects. But I mean, it is an investment, an investment we should make. And not one we make on a regular basis compared to, like you said, other, other decisions typically. Now, specifically what goes up there, that's probably going to require a little community involvement. But I know we have plenty of ideas. I've heard plenty of things from the community already. Some of those.
There's probably been, has there been some public input sessions over the years? I think there probably has been some. Hasn't there been some, not, I don't know how formal it might have been, but where I had people, where I asked the fellow possessed, so what do you think should happen to it? I'm not sure if that was ever anything formalized or not. But.
... assessment in 2018.
Is it there? Mr. Guffey's been in planning a great deal of his career, and looks at things from a planner's perspective, perspective sometimes, as to what's the highest, the best use for different types of property and so forth. Do you have any observations you'd like to share with us, Stacey?
I'd say a couple of things. One is, thank you to the people who were on the board at the time who decided to keep the town hall downtown. Because I think that was a really forward-thinking decision to keep town hall downtown. It's important to have those components in a downtown. The second thing is, whether we make a decision tonight or at a subsequent meeting not too far down the road, I would like to make sure that we stop the can from rolling down the road, because I think it's been long enough. And thirdly, I'll say that when we did the comprehensive plan, we did show mixed-use development there. And the idea behind that would be that the town would come up with a, a plan based on housing needs and retail needs, and then sell the property or sell it at reduced cost along with that plan. If, if that's the way the board decided to go, that would be the only way to do it, I believe. I don't think you can just put it on the market and expect that to happen. But I'll say, along with that, that after we made the decision to put the skate park there, that recreation in my mind became a more viable option. That's not to say that the entire property has to be used for recreation, but I can see the value now of having a recreation complex. It doesn't just include a skate park, where you have one recreation use sitting up there by itself. Because we are going to need facilities for that skate park. So why not have other uses that, that we can double up on the use of those facilities? And the final thing I'll say is, I do think that this is also, because of some of the county needs, a good opportunity for a potential partnership with Macon County.
I know Ms. Saline's been on the board for a short time, but she is, impressed me as the kind of a person that does a lot of research, asks a lot of questions, and looks at things in close detail. And she's, I'm sure, studied this issue a lot. And I won't ask her how much time she spent on it, but I know she's asked a lot of questions about it. Do you have any observations, since you've been on the board, about the future use of this property, really?
Yeah. Surprise. It is such a beautiful piece of property. I mean, it's just beautiful. And I think it was smart for the council to have purchased it when they did. I mean, my grandfather used to say that's the one thing they're not making any more of, is land. And that certainly is a beautiful piece. I have, I have read quite a few things, and I'm pretty convinced that mixed-use development, along with keeping the skate park where that is, and some other outdoor facilities, I think we ought to seriously explore interest in mixed-use development. I have talked with a couple of people who say, you know, we haven't done much of that in the mountain area. That's just not something that we've done. But that, you know, that doesn't mean that we couldn't do it, that we couldn't put out a request for information or a request for ideas. And I agree with Stacy that, you know, it would, we would, the town would have to have some, you know, use some of the resources that we have to attract somebody that would do mixed-use development. Housing, and I'm not talking about only low-income housing, but housing for people. We, as David said, we're not going to grow if we don't take care of our, our youth and our kids, and that's a place to focus. But we also have to have places for people who live and work to live. And every study that I see, including the comp plan, or whatever we call it, as well as the study on the Macon County. as the study on the Macon County housing market, shows over and over that we do not have sufficient housing. And some mixed-use development could include, you know, some apartments, some individual houses. I mean, there, there are so many different things that we could do that we, that we don't have exposure to, because we haven't gone that route. I'd ask Amy if we've ever even, we haven't marketed it. I mean, it's been basically, as Adam said, we've land banked it. I mean, we've, we've enjoyed cutting the yard, I would say, and enjoyed it. It was a nice green space, and I love green space. We, we need more of it, but I think we really sincerely have to think about the housing needs of people that need to live and work in Franklin. So I'd love to see some retail and some housing as well as recreation, and all of that could be facilitated on a piece of property of that size and that location. I did talk with one of our people that we work with, with Russ Harris, and he said, you know, they just, you know, you could do it, you could think about it. We couldn't do some of the stuff that he had thought of before because of the manufacturing that's there. I mean, there's some kind of credits that you could get that you couldn't get because of the manufacturing, but I think, I think we ought to at least give a, get a shot at looking at what would mixed-use look like? Would anybody be interested in doing that? How would that benefit the county, I mean, the town and the county, I guess? And what, you know, what would be, what would it take to make that a good place for people to live and work and have some more retail as well as? And I think we could do recreation. The one thing, I mean, I don't, I hear what you say about recreation, and that was probably the biggest thing my mother used to talk about all the time, other than circling the city restaurants. She thought we ought to have something else to do as we were growing up, but, you know, we have so much more recreation now, so much more outdoor activities. And I, I think we ought to think about some other stuff, too.
One of the things that will have to be done, there's, there's a high likelihood that since that's so close to a center of the Cherokees who lived here many, many, many years before we did, there is a high probability that there may be some historical artifacts on that property. I don't know that there's ever been a Phase One study or an archaeological survey of it. Does anybody know that there has been any such study?
I'm sure there hasn't.
I hadn't read a thing about it.
Whatever you do with, if you're going to disturb any of the property up there, then you're going to have to probably, since it is owned by a local government, will be required to do a Phase One and an environmental study and a probably historical archaeological study on that. I'm not sure how much that would cost or who would do it, but if the property is disturbed, then that'll have to be one of the first steps that will have to be decided on. I guess what I take it from, from the comments of the board, that nobody's ready to put a for sale sign on it at this time. Is that, am I reading that right?
It's been for sale since.
Two thousand and five?
Well, five or six. Once we decided that, once we decided to come here, we didn't put a for sale sign, but anybody who would have been interested in property, something, would have seen that. There's some reason, and I think a lot of the reason is just the access to it. First Street coming down to the Highlands Road is such a bottleneck. I really believe that is, I haven't talked to potential developers, but I think it has to be a serious impediment to, to dense use of that property. And I have ideas how to alleviate that if we want to really get deep into it. I have often felt like we could have a little neighborhood there with some shops with housing on top, have the water and sewer there, but it's never happened. I've been on the board except for two years since then, neither me or anybody else has tried really to, to make it happen. The, the lower portion going on Crane Circle, I still think in my mind, it would lend itself to, to at least two-level apartments, maybe, maybe in such a way that the top level would, would enter from, or at least be able to exit onto the, to the flat area. But I, I don't see a lot of use recreationally for the, the slope coming down to Crane Circle, which would, me in my mind, allow, I'd love to see housing there. I'd love to see it along there. If, I haven't had it scaled out, but I think it would work, you, you know, cut retaining wall there. And then the slope itself coming down the, the beautiful field, to me, it just cries for an amphitheater use. It just, and it would, you'd be looking, you know, towards the west, and it just would lend itself in my mind to a use open space, but for amphitheater. Obviously, we'd have to have facilities put in there, and we'd have to, we'd have room up on top to continue to expand in the recreational area, a pavilion or things like that. So I, I think in, taking Rita's position, I think we can mix in housing, but I, I am not satisfied that the way it's configured right now and the amount of time that's passed and nobody has come to us, I'm not sure that it's, that's its best use.
It looks like you have one group come. I looked at whoever it was.
Holland Grove came one time.
Yeah. But that was, that was, that's really the only offer that's ever been made on it that you know of?
It has probably a low ball.
Yeah. I think that's why y'all.
Yeah.
I think, I think looking back at the Venice, I think their offer was less than what the town had paid for.
Oh, yeah. Quite a bit less.
Quarter. It's just, you know, I just, nobody in all this time has been no real interest. I, I've told anybody who listens, I think the saving grace for everybody is that big bamboo, big roll of bamboo, it just hides it, nobody thinks about it. Every day in and day out, you drive by, but you don't even think about it. If that was leveled and you, you saw how beautiful it was every day, it'd be more interest. I like the bamboo.
Oh, I hate the bamboo.
You ever been to Cherokee, to the riverfront park?
Yes.
They have trails through the bamboo.
I don't know, it's so invasive.
Um, neither one of y'all are wrong, at least not completely wrong, but, okay, but whatever we do, like, this is not a tract in the middle of the wilderness. I mean, there's a factory right next to it, and there's a blighted residential neighborhood right next to it. So, I mean, you're not just going to throw a magic bullet at it and the factory disappear and people, like, you know, want to live there. It's a factory, and it makes noise, and it's not the greatest place to live. That being said, that's why the neighborhood next to it is not the greatest place to live in town either. So, we have to be sensitive of not just this property, but you got to build for where you're at if we are going to build something there. I mean, you can't just go and put commercial cute houses in there, townhouses above and commercial below, like a planned development expected to take off with a blighted neighborhood and a factory right next door. Whatever goes there needs to lift that section up.
Oh, sure.
Because that's, that's high-density housing right in there, and it could be higher density if we wanted it to be. So, I mean, that needs to be thought about. Joe's idea about the amphitheater is phenomenal. I mean, then you've got your concerts in the park series, you've got Shakespeare in the park, whatever it is there. But I want to get back on the youth horse for a moment, if I might. Out of our four million dollar budget as a town, I think it's one point five million is for law enforcement. And it used to be ten thousand for recreation. I don't even know what it was this year. Was it forty thousand for recreation?
Very minimal.
So, I mean, that's, that's a really, really big difference. So, I mean, we've got this dichotomy, and this includes the county, where we spend a lot of money arresting sixteen to like twenty-six-year-olds, but we don't spend hardly any money on like six-year-old to sixteen-year-olds. Like, there's got to be some philosophical argument that makes sense, that says if you inject a little bit of money into this youth's life, maybe they can go to this park instead of going and getting beat by a stepdad or whatever it is. Maybe they can go to this park and just have a shot. And, and this goes back to connectivity to, Greenway connectivity to libraries and rec parks, too. This goes to a whole livability concept here. If you invest in youth and give them a place to go, you don't kick them out of the park at dark, where they go into some drug-infested house and do drugs because we're allowed to be anywhere, like the community building in the rec park was when I was a kid. We got kicked out of there at nighttime, and we were trying, trying to play flashlight tag. Like, youth gets chased off. And from the county perspective, they do a great job with senior service center. I mean, they talked about rebuilding and doing a much bigger senior services building and compound, but there isn't a youth services building and compound. Maybe you could mix the two, I don't know. But we're really like on the front edge here, weirdly, given our somewhat backwards way of thinking towards youth in this town and this county, in the fact that we're talking about a skate park. Like, that doesn't happen a lot in these type of communities. And in the county traditionally has never wanted to do a skate park, because for whatever reason, there hasn't been a lot of value seen towards kids that can't throw a football, can't hit a baseball, and can't make a jump shot in this community. Kids are second class if you're not good at those sports. Those sports do get invested in. Weirder, outlying individual sports don't. I don't see the county dynamic changing towards those youth sports in the near future. That puts us on the forefront of, what are we going to do? We know this exists. How do we save these kids from going off the edge? And they're savable, and this is real. I mean, y'all might think I'm full of crap, I'm not. This is the thing that impacts youth and changes their life, giving them a place and telling them, you have worth, you have value, you don't have to be a bad person when you get older. You can make it. That changes communities and it changes lives.
So take your magic darts and throw them at that property and tell me what your vision is.
We've started it with the skate park, although I'm not going to, I'm not going to take a sigh of relief until.
Tell me what the rest of it looks like.
It's, it's mentally, it's, it's the whole mental concept of valuing people that are undervalued in this community.
David, I'm trying to argue with you. You say recreation, recreation, I want to know what you use think that entails.
That skate park, that skate park right there is a huge difference maker.
But we're doing that.
I, I agree, just, I'm not going to be happy till I'm on it, on a skateboard till the concrete's there. I'll, I'll take a, a sigh of relief when that happens.
But what's the end game? What's your end game there? I mean.
This, this is the end game, having disc golf there, it's frequently used by people.
Disc golf and nothing else, just an end.
No.
That's it?
I'm not trying to be contentious. It's a mentality, Mike, it's not just this piece of property.
I want to know besides, I mean, just skate, I mean, I don't get it, because we're already going to do a skate park there.
I, I'll, I'll tell you where I'm coming from.
I want to know, what else do you see there, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, a bicycle pump track.
What's a bicycle pump track?
Uh, Cherokee's about to build one, it's a, it's a facility that involves pavement and curves and lines. It's, okay, let me tell you a good quote that I read a couple days ago, talking about outdoor communities in North Carolina. Helmets and knee pads and skateboards and bicycle pumps are the helmet and baseball bat and baseball mitt of today's day and age. And that's just, that, I'm getting that out there and people understanding that that is youth nowadays.
I'm not saying you're wrong, I'm just going to know what your vision is.
It's a paradigm change. And I'm not, Joe's not wrong about having some townhouses there on the, on the slope. I'm not opposed to that, but we don't have a skate park there yet. We're trying, but I mean, we're not there yet.
As long as I'm on this board, there's going to be one.
Thank you, Mike, and I, I want to keep pushing for that type of stuff, but it's not just about this piece of property, it's about an overarching philosophy that values youth. That's my biggest soapbox.
Very good points, David, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your passion, and I'm sure these young folks and the people who support them do as well. I, I think what I hear board members saying is, there are a lot of options. What we need to be able to do is give our administrator and our team some direction on which way to go to get us the information to make final decisions. What I hear is, there's a good possibility that housing is, is a tremendous need, and that was pointed out. There's a need for, for more recreation opportunities in here. There's a need, I think, as Joe pointed out, for entertainment-type facilities, entertainment venues here. So why couldn't, why couldn't it be all three? Is there enough room to do all three in that one spot? Housing, recreation, and entertainment?
There probably would be, I would think. I mean, I, what I would have to have, I mean, and I would think that any, anything, that we have to have some more information. I mean, I know we've been sitting on this property for years and years and years, but I mean, if, if there was a development type of, you know, plan, I mean, we would have to, we'd have to reach out. I asked Justin if we had any real experience with, you know, reaching out to developer-type people and saying, what do you see here? Even recreation-type people. I mean, people do this. I mean, they, they look at these kinds of things, look at the slope of the land, look at the environment in which it is, and they say you could do this, this, or this. And I'm not talking about spending a ton of money, I really am not. But I mean, this new thing that we've got going with the, you know, the hotel, that's the first time we've done anything like that. I mean, there's, there's firsts in this, so we would have to have more information. And I, I would think that a twelve-acre plot, I mean, we've got a lot of vacant land in Franklin, I know that, I've looked at that, that Justin's got that in the plan, how much vacant lot, you know, how much vacant land we have in the town. So, but I think we just have to, you know, say, what would it take to attract developers? What would it take to put in a, an amphitheater? What kind of adjustments would we be willing to make, you know, what kind of give and take, would we be willing to make?
Joe?
I'm going to speak, I'm going to speak for David here and try to answer your question, Mike, which is a very good question. Realistically, there's only a few acres of land that's really flat, you know, usable for a lot of things, obviously with the skate park is some part of it, and up, up in that area. I mean, I could see, obviously, a skate park. I could see, I'll, I'll say pickleball, because that's something coming up, but that's a flat surface, and it would lend itself to also multi-use, maybe with a basketball court or two. I could certainly see a pavilion up there for, for gatherings, covered pavilion with a good bathroom facilities, maybe shuffleboard, maybe something like that. I could see that being the heart of, of recreational. The, the bike track would, could probably get woven in some form or fashion, but that would still leave, in my mind, the slope coming down and then the coming off of Crane Circle.
I'll tell you what, people think about an amphitheater and they think concrete and steel, and that's not even, wouldn't even be necessary on that slope.
No, it's perfect. Bring your blanket, bring your chair.
Well, if you want to go a step further, you could terrace it and sow it in grass and have flat terrace level, of levels of terrace step downs.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, your, your expense on amphitheater would be the stage itself.
And either build a stage, permanent, and you know, I've always had that dream of the fifty-three-foot, that, that field, that field rake had and sold, and it worked so good that you would just pull it in and, and be able then also to move it to other places. But yeah, it, it just lends itself to that.
David, I don't think I'm arguing with you, I just, we, you know, I wanted to know what else you envisioned there. That was what I was trying to get at, and what else, what, what other?
Well, a maze through the bamboo, a couple of, honestly, I mean, Cherokee's bamboo's phenomenal, I mean, we go there and take pictures, but.
Send them out to the highway.
I want, I think we have to have a thing where you just roll down the hill, that I can't think of.
That's fine, too, let kids, let kids be kids, but no, uh, uh, some giant boulders that we could get placed in a, not a Stonehenge formation, but maybe a north, south, east, and west. I'm talking big boulders, you know, ten feet tall. Kids can go and they can boulder on for a minute or two or something like that, and sunsets are phenomenal from there. So, I mean, there's nothing wrong with people going up there as a family, picnicking, or even let them be at the amphitheater, listening to Shakespeare at the park or a concert series, and the kids can be over there climbing on the boulders or skateboarding, whatever it is. Things we haven't thought of are the things that can go here. Like, I mean, it, it really is, I mean, sky's the limit, I mean, anything, and not, it doesn't have to be huge, it doesn't even have to be expensive, it just has to be something where people can go. I mean, let kids go play flashlight tag air at night and not get chased off. I mean, let the police patrol, let the police interact with our youth there and say, hey, you know what, you're a decent kid, you know, stay out of harm's way, you know, I know you, I know your mama, whatever it is, be a decent person.
So, what I hear is the board is looking at a mixed use of the property. Is that right?
That's right.
We said mixed use, including houses, entertainment, recreation, we, we're saying mixed use, is that, is that what? We, we're saying mixed use, is that, is that what everybody's focused on? Because we have to give our staff some direction on where to spend their time and efforts. And if we say to our manager and her folks, "Look, we wanna keep the property in the town ownership for right now, and we wanna focus on developing it into these things that the board discussed. See what the possibility is for housing, check and find out what we need to do for recreation, what's, what's feasible, what's allowable, and, and also entertainment, as Joe mentioned. And what can, what can you do to bring other folks in, uh, for entertainment and, and concerts or whatever it might be." Then, if we, if we say to the staff, "Look, focus your efforts on developing this as a, as a mixed-use facility for all the people in the county, including those things that the board has identified," then you're gonna have to say, "Well, we can do that. This is what you're gonna have to have." You're gonna have to have, first of all, an environmental impact study, because you are gonna disturb some property. And you are gonna have to have an, uh, an archaeological study, and Eastern Ban is gonna be, wanting to be part of that, so we need to make sure that they're included in that. And then you're gonna have to have somebody with expertise in coming up with some kind of a schematic design on what the vision of the board is for a mixed-use facility on 12.7 acres in the middle of Franklin. And then they would come up with their ideas based on your input and come up with what you think might work on this piece of property. Then, if that works, you figure out, well, how are we gonna do this? How long is it gonna take? How much is it gonna cost? And what kind of permits, what are we gonna have to have in order to make this a reality? We can talk about boulders, and we can talk about cane, and we can talk about grass and all that stuff, but until we get some kind of a specific focus for our administration to work toward, we're just talking about it. And we've done that for quite a number of years. So if, if, if I'm wrong, tell me. But I hear the board saying, "We like all three things. We like recreation. We like housing. And those are both, both needed. And entertainment, we don't have a good venue here for that." And so I hear the board saying, "Those three things are priorities for us to focus on using this asset that the town currently owns and is paid for, and it's right here in the middle of the town. What can our, what can our staff do to work toward putting together a plan to provide those things that the board is saying that these are our priorities?" And they are. Housing, we've talked about that.
Some of those things might fall to the wayside as we do in this...
They might, they might, but you don't know that until you, until you start working on it.
We know recreation, that you can be there. We know that for a fact. So, but let's look at these three things, and I guarantee you, one or, one or two of them may fall by the wayside.
Well, they may all fall together. It depends, it depends on what's there. I, I don't know, I'm not a planner. I'm not a recreation specialist. All I know is 12.71 acres out there, but it has water and sewer. And it has the potential to be a benefit to the folks who live here now and in the future. It's not gonna be a fly-by-night thing. It should be something that's gonna be built to last, to benefit the people in this town. Because you know who paid for that?
Yeah.
The people who live here and pay their taxes paid for that, and so they deserve some kind of return on their investment.
I'd love to see what, what Justin's got over there.
This is part of your COF plan.
Yeah.
Turn your screens on, you do.
Because I've looked at...
Want to use technology. Gotta hit that button, Joe.
Just hit the button.
Button, button.
Justin, can you scroll down?
Yeah, right in the middle, buddy.
The middle button.
I would suggest to put this up, because we did this for the COF plan. Those structures on the Whitmire property are relevant scale, and that gives you an idea of exactly the kind of density you could have on that parcel, which would make me argue that maybe what we should do is decide that there's a section up at the top that we wanna use for recreation, for the skate park, pump track, basketball court, whatever it may be, pavilion, and maybe some of the other properties that Joe was talking about, designate that for, to study for housing. Because you can see here, between the single-family units and the larger units, you can fit a lot of density on a property that, that size.
What are the small yellow ones, those little townhouses?
Those are little single-family units with the storage behind them.
So on the hill that Joe was talking about, which I do think lends itself for a drive-in bottom and a, and a walkout top into the park, you're talking, there's, there's 22 there of those little single-family. You're talking 20 units along that bank, 30 units along that bank?
Yeah.
Probably 20, 25 maybe, max.
Because part of that section that Joe was talking about along the bank is growing, we, you know, set aside as, for an idea for a little greenway spur through there. Wouldn't necessarily have to do that, so then you've got room all the way down to the, to the edge of the stream, because it's in the flood plain and not the floodway, so it's, it's buildable.
Or you have green space in, in front and behind each house. Maybe still do the spur, but just move them closer down the hill.
Right. But, you know, having places closer together, too, is not bad. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Bad for some people, not bad for other people.
Yeah, right, right, right. It depends on what they're looking for.
What you're gonna do in town.
Pardon?
Expect density in town.
And i- if we're gonna do something like this, I mean, we've already started to dedicate this thing to recreation, kicking and screaming and getting dragged along the way, but some of it is gonna be recreation. I mean, it may be, with the cost of building right now, that, uh, RFP would not happen right now, because it's not affordable for a developer to come in and do this. But it may be when the upper flatter sections are, resemble a park, maybe there's a pavilion, maybe there's an amphitheater. Maybe at that point in time, this hill that I think we can all agree would be okay as residential, if not great as residential, maybe it does become valuable then for somebody to come in and build these places.
I just would make the argument that if you, if you wanna do housing and you wanna solve, not solve, but take a bite out of the housing problem in Macon County, in the town of Franklin, then the only way to do that in a market like this is through a subsidy, and the subsidy would be either selling that portion of the property at a reduced cost or, or giving it to the right person. Selling it, of course, would be preferable, but that's where you get the thing, you get these folks to do what, exactly what the town wants them to do.
A developer could get tax credits for that as well.
Developer could also get a tax credit.
But, and what I wasn't thinking about it, RFP is so much as, you know, just for them to give us information about what they would think about. And how, I mean, even how you get that list would be, you know, we could work with Russ or some other people to get a list of people who do this kind of development or would be interested in that.
I would just say that the town, the town should dictate what it wants of that property.
Right, absolutely.
Because you could get somebody in there that does the, the cheapest, easiest thing to do, and you end up with a big parking lot and a big square box.
Right.
Or they could do it cheap and easy and still charge 300 grand for each one, and then that doesn't help the demographic we're actually trying to help.
Right.
Well, I think you need to retain the right to make final decision on it before anybody does anything to it that is, that you don't think is in the best interests of the town. So where do we wanna go from here?
I'd like to throw it out, and we designate that top part for recreation, and we look at the other part for, for housing. And then whatever we can start on in terms of recreation, let's get started on it.
Absolutely. Focus on recreation and housing. What about entertainment? Joe's...
That's part of the recreation, I think.
Is that part of recreation?
Yes, but I think Stacy is probably on a good point. I mean, we're gonna take it step at a time, and I think the first step would be to see what the recreational use could be for the upper...
More level area, yeah.
Well, like David said, we work on this recreation, maybe entertainment, and then maybe it is more attractive to somebody to come in there and build residential structures.
Maybe it helps turn the neighborhood behind, so that property values are, are more stabilized and, and people wanna live there more than...
Because those places, you're not gonna want them one as you want them, and that happened overnight anyway, so...
But I think we ought to also be looking at, are there, are there resources that we could help that blighted neighborhood? Because you've got that in this plan as well.
That's something that this board was going, through Barbara McCray, right?
Yeah, Barbara had brought that up as an, as an item for the board to study, what could be done with that development up there. As she said at one time, that was one of the best developments in town years and years ago.
It was, when we were growing up.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
I mean, it was the Whitmire subdivision. It was the Whitmire subdivision.
What'd she call it, Lyman Fields?
Lyman Field was a part of it. Yes, Lyman Field, uh-huh.
Well, if they're gonna keep the property, we're gonna do something with it. We need to go ahead and get some studies to find out what we got underneath the soil up there, don't we?
I'm not sure of that. I am not, you may be right. I've never heard that. It's never come up before. I don't think that...
Well, I've dealt with it several times, and it's always come up before. Any place that, of property that belonged by, belongs to a local government, if you're a private developer, you don't have to worry about it. But if you're a local government and you're gonna disturb some property that might have historical or archeological significance, you're gonna have to do it whether you want to or not.
You may be very well right, Mayor, but I just hadn't, I really hadn't thought about it.
I'd like to find out what it would cost for us to do that, whether, and then the board could, could decide if they wanna proceed with it or not, but I think we need to find out what that would cost to do.
Knowledge.
So I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to have the manager's office find out what it would cost to do an environmental, Phase 1 study, and also perhaps a archaeological study, and then bring that information back to the board for y'all to decide if that's worth your while or not.
I think it's, I just read something today, Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, says that you probably have to do an arche...
It's gonna be green space forever now.
Damn, you're deep.
You're doing a good job.
You're doing a good job.
She does her homework.
That's what I'm, I'm doing.
Absolutely.
But I mean...
I never did.
So, so if we do that, and then I think the other, the next thing to do, if, if the board's decided this is the focus that you wanna go toward with recreation and perhaps housing down there, that gives our manager and her team some focus to work on to bring information back to the board, so you can make some final decisions. The final decision tonight is, we're not gonna sell the property. We're gonna use it for public service, and part of that's gonna be recreation, and part of that, if possible, is gonna be housing. And if we can do that, we need to find out what it's gonna take for to accomplish those goals. And our staff, or under our manager's leadership, can tell you what you need. She's been through this before. I know there are resources out there, because I've dealt with them before, who, who have a lot of background in recreation planning and so forth. We might be able to get somebody at a very reasonable cost to give us some kind of a idea, if you want that. But if, if she can put together the things that we need to be addressing specifically to move forward with this plan, I think that would put us on a, on a, on a path to actually get something done, instead of just putting it on the next agenda. What do y'all think?
I, I'm not opposed to any of that. Information's always good, yeah. Stacy's got a motion on it, I just didn't know if you wanted to...
Was it a motion?
Was it not?
I don't, I don't know. If you want it to be a...
It's close. I thought it was a motion.
If I can, if I can recall, I believe what Stacy said, he'd like to make a motion that the top part, the most level area of the Whitmire property, be designated for recreational use, and the other part, the lower part, that's not suitable for recreation to be used, to be considered as possible housing use. Is that what you said?
I'll make it to, to, to open it up for discussion, 'cause I know we discussed some things yesterday.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
And is there a second?
I'll second it. Let's discuss. I just, I don't know where the lines delineate between...
We have a motion and a second, and we're open for discussion.
Discussion, I, what, in my mind, the logical next step would be to, I'll call it Phase 1, which is the upper flat area, and get, get our parameters, and then just find the best recreational use for Phase 1. And that's gonna entail different uses, and there's always three questions you ask yourself when you get into a project. Where's the money coming from? Where's the money coming from? And where's the money coming from? And so that's gonna be a huge aspect of it. But we feel like, I think the five of us are solid enough that the upper portion there, we're already halfway foot in the water with the skate park, and then, you know, then you're gonna have restroom facilities. And it just lends itself to that. Let's see what we can come up with there. The rest of it might fall into place as we get there, but I don't want us to make it more complicated than we have to. I think we start at Phase 1.
I think he's basically saying, explore the possibilities, not saying dedicate it.
Oh, of course.
I'd throw out one thing on the cost, too, that the, the county obviously has some particular needs in terms of recreation with pickleball. And if there's an opportunity, because our taxpayers are also county taxpayers, if, if there's an opportunity for us to work together in, in a joint project and double up on some of that money, I think we should do it.
Oh, yeah.
I think that's a good, that'd be a good topic. We're right now trying to set up a time when we can have a joint meeting with the county and the town and the town of Highlands, and so our manager's working on a date that, that will work for all three of us.
Yeah, but that's not a meeting where you get down and talk about this kind of stuff.
Well, we can, we can open it up then, but then you get into specifics. You're gonna have to sit down with some staff and some other folks to work out the details, but you first gotta find out whether they wanna dance or not.
You're right.
Go ahead, Rita.
You go ahead.
I just don't understand the delineation of what the upper part, because the upper part to me is everything that's mowed, and the lower part is the, the bank down to the creek. Like, what, basically the driveway almost kinda separates the two, except there's that little, anything that's, you know, goes down at an aggressive slope that we're not mowing.
I thought we mowed all of it. It looked mowed to me.
We mow everything up top and we go down, so that the, um, disc golf has some...
Yeah, Justin's got it right there.
I'm thinking, you know, I'm thinking about, about here.
Yeah, I, the, the, the problem I'm having with the delineation, I mean, with his motion is, I don't, I don't want us to set in stone how much land we're talking about here, because I think that, I think that's...
You need to leave it, leave it flexible enough.
I do, too.
Because that lower part is really steep, where it goes down toward that flood zone. It'd be hard to do anything down there.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, you can't do anything over there, bud.
All these trees are gone. This was, this was before we really cleaned it up. We underbrushed it, and now there's just, you know, a few trees here and there.
And it's beautiful.
Um, so this, there's more green space...
Yeah.
In, in here.
I think you see what can fit on the level area, not, not specifically limit it or expand it until you know what...
Yeah, I think so. That, that would be...
Do what you can use.
Yeah, that's right.
Would it make sense for us to, to have a preliminary decision on the kind of uses that we're gonna have and, and figure out how much space we're gonna take up to determine what we'll use for recreation?
I worry that we're trying to shoehorn a lot of, like, well, we'll put this here, we'll put this, we'll put this here, instead of, I mean, we need to kind of let it organically come about and let people tell us what they want to see there. I mean, we don't want to stack a whole bunch of recreation uses. 13 acres is not that much property, folks. Like, if you're actually, if we're actually gonna do recreation, I mean, you're gonna need eight of the acres for recreation, I mean, minimum, and that leaves really from the bamboo towards the floodplain, the hill section. If you're not gonna do it, I think you're just gonna muddle it, and you're not gonna get a good use of, of either one.
Joe, how many apartments are in this?
Four.
So you can get out, there's four apartments in that little square, and you can get a reference to how much room that took. You know, I'm just thinking, even if, even if you just did apartments through here, you could do some more down on this, and then you leave all this recreation, and then you still got off down the hill, and you still got bamboo, and, you know, you still got a lot left, even, so you could just make a few different ideas as well.
That first piece, we're pointing extra tire parks, where you said apartments, I think we should save an acre of that for a future fire department use for some sort of town structure that we may need on that side of town. I'd hate to spend $500,000 a decade from now for an acre of ground over there because we need it for some reason. So I think that actually does need to be land banked for-
I think we're getting into the weeds, and we're not trying to design it tonight, we're just trying to get a direction on which way to go. There'll be a lot more questions and a lot more opportunity to find, too, this, as we go along. As a manager, have you got enough information from this, well, we haven't voted on this yet, but if this passes, is that enough information for you to proceed to bring back information on what it would take to accomplish these priorities that the board has identified?
I mean, if I may, Stacy has a motion that all of the land upland and then the hill could be residential. I mean, I just, I may need to rescind my second, and, because I don't know where that line is. I mean, what Joe's saying is pretty small.
I think I understood Stacy's motion was to designate the upper portion where it's level, is recreation, and to consider the possibility of housing on the lower level where recreation may not be feasible. You don't know where any, where any housing is feasible out there or not till you take a look at it and see.
But do we need a motion? I mean, can we not just go forward?
That's what I was, just as the board said-
We can, if the board has a consensus, that's, that's the route we want to go.
We said on the front end, we-
We won't, we won't have to necessarily take a vote. If that's a consensus, I understand the consensus is to do recreation and look at the possibility of housing on the lower level, and to ask our management team to look at what it takes to accomplish that goal, bring us a proposal back for, for the town board to look at and fine tune, and then take the next step as what she finds is necessary for us to do in order to get on down the road.
There are two, that's, that's very, very different ideas between what's the upper level. I mean, you're, if you're just using what Joe said, you can get 60 houses in there, maybe 80 houses. If you're doing the recreation that I think needs to be done, you're gonna get 25 houses there. So, I mean, in Stacy's defense, I do think that's what we're here to do, is to try to delineate what we want to see. And given the compromise that I think we, we want to see recreation, and we do want to see housing, we need to give clear marching orders than just flat lands recreation and-
Justin's pulled up the contour map for everybody to look at.
What do I need to do to rescind the motion so you can-
Do you want, or is the board interested in, I'll just get some input here, does the board want to take an official action at this time, or by consensus have our manager to proceed based on the conversations we've had here?
I think, yes, we need to do something. We need to decide if we're gonna delineate some of this for recreation and some of this for exploring housing.
Well, if you want to do that, we can put it in official record that we have a motion on the floor of Mr. Guffey to designate the upper level portion of this property, if I say that correctly, as a recreation area, potential recreation. And then the part that's down closer to the road, to the Highlands Road, would be studied to see if it's feasible for housing, or is it a different area?
I think the lower portion that Stacy's talking about is along the creek here.
It's along, it's along the floodplain area.
Yeah, not along the road.
All right. Is that, is that correct?
I intended to say that part would be looked at for housing further, possible further recreation and entertainment.
Yeah, I like that.
Would you accept that as an amendment to your motion?
I'd like, somebody write that down.
You'd accept that as an amendment to his?
I don't, I mean, I'm not understanding well enough how much land you're talking about now. If you're talking about eight acres of the 12-
At least, probably, yeah.
For, for recreation.
This area right down here, you can't hardly walk on it, it's too steep.
Okay, right here is where the house used to be. This is where the skate park's going in this corner right here. This is actually flat. That's all you have that's actually flat. This is pretty gentle. Joe's idea for the amphitheater, which I think is a fantastic idea, the stage would go right here. This is a bowl that's very gentle that faces that way. That's the bamboo right there. This is a little knoll right here. There's a line. The hill is approximately right there. That's where it starts to go down.
Justin has it on the board.
So, yeah, Justin's got it, he nailed it. Yes. So that's where you could have your two-story townhouses or three-story townhouses, wherever it is, and that's still a pretty good challenge. He's got it measured. Good job, Justin.
Roughly 4.27 acres.
Okay. Except I think the, I think the knoll should-
Now that that's clarified, we had a motion and an amendment to the motion, and the, the member who made the motion accepted the amendment, does the person who seconded the original motion agree to the amendment?
I like the knoll for recreation, but that's fine. If we need to print that map out in that Stacy's motion, go for it.
My motion is this map.
What is? That's- Let me tell you what, let me tell you what it's gonna take, guys, girls. If we figure out how many acres that plus or minus on the, on the flat spot, and that's where our first focus is, that's where our first attention is, it probably would take some type of architectural help, design, a designer or somebody, to be able to sketch out, this is what can be used on this three acres, or turns out it's three and a half, and figure out what is the best use recreationally. I'm hoping it, obviously it would have to include bathrooms, I'm thinking a pavilion, but we don't have to make that decision, but if we don't come back with a schematic, a design for that section, I don't think we have good marching orders. I think that's our first step, to see if that's where we want to plant the flag, and then see what develops.
We get to choose where it's at, though, and there's already sewer and water where the house was, that would be the pavilion site.
I guess so.
I mean, because we're concerned about budgetary.
Well, we are.
Where's the money coming from, where's the money coming from, where's the money coming from? I mean, you already have part of a foundation that is not useful, but there's water and sewer at the house site.
You may very well, yeah. I'm not gonna object on that. But I think unless we go as far as to get some type of schematic, I don't think we have to spend an arm and a leg. We may have to get some, you know, it'll cost a little something, but until we see what can, what can go there, swing sets or-
And then we need to get, we gotta get input from people.
I think that would, without getting in too far into the weeds, I think that was Stacy's motion.
Is that similar, Stacy?
Yeah, so, I mean, the gist of it is, let's take the, the upper section, I mean, in my mind, a little more than what Justin has there, because you were talking about the amphitheater, and, and let's, let's just go ahead and make a motion, we want to go down the road of recreation for that portion of the property, and then we can go back and study housing on the other property as such an update.
So you're withdrawing your original motion?
Ain't nothin' built in.
And your motion is just to focus on the recreational aspect of it, or you still leaving the housing in?
Well, I won't leave the housing in, but I think we explore the recreation first.
Okay, the first priority is explore the recreational area that we all know that we're talking about here, and with also looking at the possibility of housing on some other part of the property that's suitable for that. And is, is that a grill?
We're getting real close, but I think-
We're getting real close.
Some, some people in our minds have clearly delineated where we want recreation and where we want housing, and that needs to be part of the-
We don't know that until we have, like Joe said, a schematic to show you what's feasible and what's not.
Schematic or no, we're, we're, we're the ones that choose it, so we can delineate, we want this to be a recreation.
After you get, after you get a layout, you can decide, well, this is not big enough, we want to make it bigger, or this is too big, we want to make it smaller.
Here's what could happen. It, it could be three levels, housing with the top level entering from the top, that means you'd have to have parking up there, so therefore that would infringe as to, you know, there's those different variances.
But that's, it's a big difference talking about that line right there and that line over there. That's what I'm saying. I mean-
But why don't we just see what a schematic, what, what it would look like if we had put out there, how, what kind of recreation, I mean, what kind of recreation do we want? How much space would it take? And then go from there, instead of, we want this whole, the whole thing for recreation.
What I asked Justin to do just now was to, on the far side, leave us some land for future use for the town itself. The middle section there, recreation, that's 6.7 acres approximately, and then you've got the other 4. whatever for housing. Is that acceptable as a starting point, knowing that we may have to at some point adjust where things need to go?
Right.
I love it.
I don't love it, because there ain't no backing off. If we get 6.7 acres for David, we'll never hear the end of it.
We ain't voted no money.
All we're doing is, is, is setting the, setting the stage for them to bring us back what is feasible. They may say it doesn't take 6.7, it takes 6.1 or 5.3 or whatever.
We don't know what we want, and there's no idea of what's feasible, because we don't know what we want there, because we're not, we're not trying to build this rec park within the next couple of years. We have a theory in mind that green space is gonna benefit us. In the meantime, we're gonna do some stuff that doesn't cost a lot of money, or that wasn't going to, the skate park now is gonna cost us money. Disc golf costs us almost nothing, although we got yelled at profusely for spending $8,000 doing disc golf, when we've already spent $14,000 doing a study. So, I mean, like, at a certain point, like, let's do less studies and let's do more stuff that's less expensive than the studies.
Well, you're gonna have to start somewhere.
We've started.
If we don't get started, because we haven't, we've got a motion on the, on the floor to focus on recreation as the first priority, see what, how much property it's gonna take to make a suitable area for recreation, and then, and then, what's the second part?
No, 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 it, it's not about how much property is suitable for recreation and what's gonna go there, it's that this property is designated as recreation. This other property over here, let's explore it as residential slash commercial slash mixed use.
I think that's what he said.
No, no, we're not studying if it's recreation or not, we're-
I know it. He just studied, he just studied the housing portion of it.
Yes, that's correct, sorry, I may have misinterpreted you.
Okay, that's what we're talking about, focus on recreation, study the housing portion of it. I believe that's what Stacy was trying to get through.
Piece of property leftover for the town.
I'm not, I'm not there yet, but for now, I ain't, I don't know there yet.
Okay.
But I might get there.
You're, you're closer than you are six years ago, at least I think.
Well, let's get closer to get something done instead of talking about it, so.
I know we're moving.
Madam, is there any more discussion on this motion?
Well, let's make sure that, that I understand what my motion is.
All right. Repeat, repeat your motion, please.
All right, so, my motion is that we designate the upper part of the property for recreation and that we begin looking at how to implement that recreation, designate the lower part for potential housing and that we-
Mixed use.
Mixed use, and we look at the potential for doing that.
What do you mean by the lower part?
The part that's not flashing on the-
So you're calling the crane circle side?
Crane circle side.
Yes, the crane side, the hill.
4. whatever.
Right. Yeah, I'm with you.
So that's the motion. Does everybody understand the motion? Was there a second to the motion?
I second it, and I still-
We have a second from Mr. Culp for any more discussion. Here are not all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, a like sign. Motion carries. Madam Manager, do you have enough to start?